Good evening, Evie Erbun, and welcome to the Town of Limmington Select Board Meeting, May ninth, two thousand and twenty-four. We will call the meeting to order at seven o'clock P. M., and we will begin with this pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we will, we begin, I would like to remind everyone that the Financial Advisory Committee will be meeting tonight directly after the Select Board Meeting, so stick around. We need an approval of the meeting minutes for May second, two thousand and twenty-four.
I'll make a motion to approve the meeting minutes for May second.
I will second that.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor? The motion carries. Approval of warrants for week nineteen, payroll warrant number forty-four for twenty-seven thousand, seven hundred fifty-one dollars, thirty-three cents, and appropriations warrant number forty-five for four hundred and eleven thousand, one hundred forty-four dollars and forty-eight cents. The total for warrants forty-four and forty-five are four hundred thirty-eight thousand, eight hundred ninety-five dollars and eighty-one cents.
I'll make a motion to approve payroll warrant forty-four and appropriations warrant forty-five.
I will second that.
For discussion, a couple of items that are recurring bills. We have EcoMaine Trash and Recycling, thirteen thousand, one hundred thirty-seven dollars, ninety cents, Bureau of Motor Vehicles, fourteen thousand, six hundred, fourteen thousand, nine hundred, sixty-one dollars, ninety-five cents. Interstate refrigerant recovery, a hundred and nineteen refrigerators, eighty-nine air conditioners, forty-six dehumidifiers. These are the items that get dropped off at the transfer station, the, the Freon and, uh, refrigerate agents, they need to be recovered before the machines can be recycled. Uh, that was for two thousand, six hundred eighty dollars. MS eighty-six, we paid them, uh, three hundred and forty-two thousand, six hundred sixty-five dollars and nine cents for this payment. Xerox, two service contracts for six hundred thirty dollars. Central Main Power, the streetlights, five hundred seventy-five dollars, eighty-four cents. Yes, we do have some of them. Uh, Melon and Sons Disposal, Town Trash Pickup, twenty-five thousand dollars. UniFirst Corporation Uniform Service, a hundred and one dollars, thirty-nine cents. FirstNet, A T and T, Fire and E M S, Department of Public Works, they use FirstNet, four hundred ninety dollars, thirty cents. Presto Fixo Janitor Service, five hundred twenty-five dollars. Uh, so with that said, I am, I have a motion and a second for the warrants. Uh, all those in favor? Motion carries. Purchase orders. Uh, Tammy, would you like to lead us with the purchase orders, please?
Sure. Uh, Public Works Department, request to pay Industrial Chem Labs for tar and asphalt remover, three hundred ninety-three dollars and eighty cents.
I'll make a motion to approve the Public Works Department purchase order request.
I will second that.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor? Motion carries.
Fire and E M S, a request to pay fire tech and safety for SCBA repair, four hundred fifty-two dollars, eighty-two cents.
I will make a motion to approve the Fire and E M S purchase order request.
I will second that motion.
Any discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor? Motion carries.
Planning Board, a request to pay Main Trust, Portland Press Herald for legal ads, a hundred and seventy-four dollars, thirteen cents.
I will make a motion to approve the Planning Board purchase order request.
I will second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor? Motion carries.
Purchase order requests for Parks and Rec, a request to pay extreme screen and sportswear for track uniforms, seventy-two dollars. A request to pay T. M. Lee Plumbing for water startup at Camp Momodeo, three hundred and forty dollars. A request to pay Amazon for before and after care summer camp, three hundred eighty-two dollars, fifty-four cents. And a request to pay Central Main Pyrotechnics for July third fireworks display, seven thousand dollars.
I will make a motion to approve the Parks and Recreation purchase order requests.
I will second that.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor? Motion carries. Weekly updates. Uh, we have the reports from our department heads. Uh, Public Works Department, they have cleared as much of the debris, limbs, and hazards that they could from Sedgley Road, Joy Joe Ro, Joy, Joe Joy Road, and Christian Hill Road. There is still a large birch tree draping over Christian Hill. It's far above traffic, but they're asking that C. M. P. uh, assist them in cutting it down. This week, they also worked at the Town Hall to repair the damaged areas on the lawn and loam and seed, et cetera. Signs have been fixed or reset. The entry walks cleaned up and the garden area is cleared. Friday, they will be working along Moi Modeo to clear the roadway, remove and chip limbs and hazard trees. Next week, Dole's Ridge Road will need tree and debris removal, and they will repair all washouts and shoulder damage. Dole's Ridge is very busy before eight A. M. and after three P. M., so they will be working within those hours with two men on traffic control. Truck fourteen is in the shop and will remain until a, until the director can look over and make sure preventive maintenance has been done and the truck can be returned to service. Rescue One has had the tires and wheels swapped to the tires used for the, the spring through fall. Uh, Public Works Director will also be working with Bill Alward from Palmer Springs to have the rescue taken in for front end alignment, and he spoke with FEMA this past week about Christian Hill Road along with the completed projects from D. R. four-nine, four-six, nine-six. Toward the ends of next week, they are hoping to get to Norton Road for the rest of the tree removal. Uh, Parks and Rec, would, did you wanna read that one off?
I have them. Okay, um, Madison sent out an email with his update, and he has applied for some grants uh, from Narragansett Number One, uh, Stephen and Tabitha King Foundation, and a federal grant for rural development. Uh, the first two, we should know about in June, and the last one could be up to a year from now. Um, so thank you for, uh, Mad, to Madison for putting those grants, uh, into place, and we will look forward to seeing if anything comes of those grants for the town. The weekly programs for, um, Parks and Recreation is before and after care, Friday, uh, Monday through Friday, early release day, Wednesday, twenty-eight kids. Um, the Coffee Social is every Wednesday from nine-thirty to eleven-thirty. Track is Tuesday and Friday. They currently have thirty-five children in that program. T-Ball is Wednesdays and Saturdays with eleven children. Uh, Music and Movement, Wednesdays at ten A. M. at the Old Town Hall, and Pickleball Tuesdays and Fridays. Uh, the Old Town Hall is being used Tuesday nights for scouts, Wednesday nights for Girl Scouts, Fridays for Storybook Theater, and it's, uh, available for rent Saturdays for, uh, birthday parties. The programs that we offer at Parks and Rec for the summer, um, both groups are close to being filled for the summer. So, uh, if you are lagging and are looking to get your kids in, you better give them a call right away. Uh, Momodeo Cleanup Day will be this Saturday, May eleventh, at nine A. M., and the beach will open May twenty-fifth for the season. Summer Camp is July eighth through August sixteenth, and group reservations for the Pavilion at Momodeo are open.
A quick note for the Moi Modeo Cleanup Day. Uh, we're only expecting individuals to put in about three hours of work. Um, it, it goes by really fast, and I believe as in years past, we will be providing pizza at the end of the cleanup. Um, they also did a water test over at, uh, Moi Modeo, uh, just, you know, making sure that everything is all set down there. All the levels were good except for the iron total. The iron content in the water at Moi Modeo is very much above average. Uh, the E. P. A. limit is set at point three, and the iron total was six point one-nine. Needless to say, there is an iron filter down at the water, um, site at Moi Modeo. However, that filter is going to need to be replaced on a very regular basis. Jason, would you like to read us the update from the Code Enforcement Office?
Sure. Uh, spoke with Craig in the last four weeks. He's processed eleven building permits, eight plumbing permits, ten electrical permits, and one shoreline permits. Um, four occupancy permits have been given out, nine growth permits, and, uh, thirty-five inspections. Uh, two weeks ago, Judy, his assistant, had started, then a great help to the Code Office. She's been going through older files from twenty-one and twenty-two to see if the jobs have been inspected, uh, making, uh, appointments for him to be inspected and putting the files away in their proper finished locations. Um, she has also been working on gravel pit inspection forms. Uh, next week, we'll be sending out a, uh, few of the junkyard and automobile graveyard violations. Um, the up-to-date totals, uh, building permits, forty, uh, plumbing, twenty-seven, electrical, thirty-two, shoreline, three, occupancy, thirteen, growth, thirteen, and revenue is fifty-three thousand and sixty-six dollars.
Thank you, Jason. Uh, update from, uh, the Limmington Fire and E M S Department. Uh, number of calls for service this week was at twelve. Um, month to date was five, year to date was two hundred and sixty-three. Two of those were fire, ten of those were E. M. S. Uh, the schedule is full with the exception of Tuesday overnight. Our E. M. S. Director is out sick, and that has left the Tuesday evening ship vacated. Our, uh, thoughts and, and, uh, and, uh, prayers go out to the E. M. S. Director. We hope that she can return soon. Uh, the June schedule is complete, and it has a few vacant shifts that, uh, the chief anticipates being filled before the end of May. Uh, they do have some trainings coming in, uh, in-house training Sunday. They, they will be holding their, uh, a training on extrication equipment. After about two hours of class time, uh, they, they, oh, this was last Sunday, I see. They went to C. I. A. and Limerick for hands-on time. Some maintenance, they're still having trouble with, uh, a circuit eight in the breaker box two. It keeps tripping. This breaker controls the shoreline power to the ambulance. When it trips, uh, we don't always know until the equipment batteries start to die, but, uh, they are working to, uh, um, rectify that problem. Uh, they're also preparing for the training. Crews checked over the extrication tools, and that's all set. Vehicles, they're still having issues with engine six leaking coolant from the radiator and water from the tank, but, uh, they are looking into the, it was reported that A. Two's air conditioning is not working, and the box is very hot. So, uh, email our chief, he called Sugarloaf Ambulance. They are the suppliers for that ambulance, and they are coming to check it out. Uh, they came out the next day and discovered a plug had been undone while installing the radios. Their tech team also determined that the refrigeration was low for the A. C. They heard back from them, and they determined it is a P. L. custom problem, not a Ford problem. However, Ro is covering the repair for them, and he will work out with Sean to get the, it scheduled for the repair. So, uh, thank you, email. Uh, hourly break it down, there were four hundred and thirty-seven point seven-five hours. Uh, forty-four of those were salary, a hundred and fifty-eight were full-time, a hundred and fifty-nine per D. M., and twenty-two point five were on-call, as well as thirty-six point seven-five hours for training. No issues other than those, and they are currently six calls behind last May, month to date, and twenty-nine calls ahead of last year to date. And so that takes care of the weekly update on activities in the town. Oh, one other thing. Uh, the Little Blue Library, uh, has been, uh, in, installed out at the, uh, out here, um, the municipal complex. It's a very nice little library. We hope that we see some participation with it. It's a great way for the communities to, to interact with each other, even if it's just, you know, taking out a book that somebody really enjoyed. Informational bulletin. Um, Jason, are you up for that?
Yeah, excuse me. Um, thank you to Sue and Ross Bartlett for creating a database of all deceased veterans in, uh, Limmington Semataries. Um, they put together, because we're gonna be putting out the new plaques and the flags coming up, uh, soon. Um, the Limmington Academy had had their meeting today, and it was an eventful year.
That's the Limmington Academy Well Association.
Okay. Um, with that being said, the Limmington Academy Well Association will be sending out bills to their customers. Tomorrow, they will turn on the outdoor spotlight.
Spigot.
Spigot. No, that's, my bad. Um, they also asked about the sale of the gym, um, what the sale of the gym will mean for their association. So that's something that we'll have to duck, discuss further with them as we go forward.
Yep.
Uh, Select Board Office hours are Thursdays, two to eight P. M. On-air times are seven P. M. Transfer Station hours are Saturdays and Sundays from nine to four, Wednesdays, twelve to four P. M. A transfer station sticker must be attached to your vehicle's windshield for disposable of all items. Transfer Station stickers are available at the Town Office for twenty dollars. No sticker is required to use the shop, the swap shop. Transfer Station does not accept brush or yard clippings. Uh, the General Assistance Office is open on Wednesdays from nine to eleven. Applications are available anytime from the Town Clerk's Office during the normal business hours. Applications must be filled out and accompanied with all supporting documentation and must be signed. Planning Board meets at the Municipal, Municipal Complex, the first and third Monday evenings at seven P. M. Uh, Parks and Rec, Cars and Coffees is held at the Old Town Hall, uh, building every Wednesday from nine-thirty to eleven-thirty. Come meet some folks, play some games. If you have any questions or suggestions, please reach out to Madison Moody, uh, our Rec Director, at m dot Moody at LimmingtonMaine.gov.
Thank you, Jason. Uh, at this time, we'd like to open the meeting to the public for any individuals that might like to address the board.
Oh, did you have something else, Tammy?
Yes.
Uh, one moment.
Yeah, if you don't mind.
Not at all.
Um, we, uh, just want to remind everybody about the, uh, zoning ordinances that we will be voting on in June.
Yes.
Um, there will be a May thirtieth, uh, informational public hearing right here after the, uh, Select Board Meeting, and the bullet points will be on the zoning, uh, ordinance, on extraction industry, subdivision ordinance, floodplain referendum, and the L. D. two-thousand three referendum. So, we, we're trying to get as much information out to everybody as we can. Um, it's a little bit of reading, but we figure that if you can just, you know, peruse all the documents before you vote, you'll have a much clearer understanding, um, to review and ask questions, and really be informed, uh, when you walk into that voting booth and know what we're looking at. Uh, the Planning Board has put an awful lot of, um, time into, uh, cleaning up these ordinance, the wording, and things like that, uh, for the betterment of the town, so we'll just, uh, bring that back to your, uh, remembrance at this time. Um, also, on the, uh, Limmington, um, webpage, uh, there's, uh, a document there that gives you the new burn permit rules in place for two thousand and twenty-four. If you have any questions about, uh, open burning, um, you can just go in and read that, and it will give you all the information that you need and direct you to some, um, online helps to, uh, the portal for the Department of Agriculture, Conversation, uh, Conservation and Forestry, and it will give you the, uh, wildfire danger report. That comes out every single morning at nine A. M., give you, uh, what type of information you need to know, uh, how dry it is, or whatever. So, um, there.
Thank you, Tammy, and, and thanks to the concerned individuals, the, the folks that, uh, helped with, uh, those, uh, those extraction ordinances. They put in a lot of work, and it really shows. The, this, uh, accepting these, uh, ordinances, if voted upon, will definitely help the town greatly moving forward. Um, with that said, uh, the meeting is open to the public if any individual would like to come forward. Yes, please. State your name for the record.
Hello, I'm Patricia Ramsdale. Um, as you probably don't know, this week was National Municipal Clerk's Appreciation Week, so I just wanted to come out and honor my deputy clerk, Beverly Foss. Um, I couldn't do my job without her. She's been a big help to me. She come into my life in two thousand and one as my deputy, stayed with me for the twenty-three years. If most people know me, I'm not a very good teacher. I just throw you to the wolves and hope you come out unscathed, which she has. And over the years, she's taken on many tasks that were out of her job realm, but she's taken them on, and the biggest improved thing I have to say about that is she takes the job and she'll take it to completion. She doesn't start it and not finish, so. And the last six weeks, she's took it upon herself to organize for the assessor so that he would have all the information he needed to go out and assess. Um, she dug around Craig's office to find stuff and all that, and then she dug up deeds and everything else for the map man, and she worked with him, and she also worked with the assessor through her lunch hours to make sure this job got done, because with all the new people in your office, we weren't sure who was gonna do the job. So, I hope you all take a minute just to say thanks, Bev, for that.
Patty, we're gonna take a minute to say thank you to you and your twenty-eight years here in the town of Limmington.
Absolutely.
Your, uh, your service to the town has not gone unnoticed. I apologize that the, the Appreciation Week went by us.
A-ry, exactly. I, I apologize. I gotta thank Betty, Patty, and Bev both. Uh, it's, they've taught me a lot since I've been here, 'cause I'm very new to this, and they've been a wealth of information, and they will going forward.
They are a wealth of information for all of us.
Twenty-eight years, it's, it's.
We don't give them enough credit.
No, not at all.
No, their, their job is, and sometimes it can be, yes, very thankfulness, but, yeah, everyone should realize that this town really couldn't function as a town if it wasn't for Bev and Patty's efforts. So, thanks again to our municipal clerks. They, they really have made a difference over these many, many years.
They make our job easy.
Very appreciated. Anything else to come before the board? Um, I, yep. Your hand was behind Steve's head, so I couldn't.
Hi, Bonnie Lord-Lovlin. Um, when you mentioned, along with Dole's Ridge, I think, Mike, that designation, D. R. something or other, you all told us what that was last week, but for the benefit of any of us who've forgotten and/or just listening to it tonight, could you remind me what that is?
I've forgotten.
It had to do with, uh...
I believe it was a FEMA, uh, uh, account.
The roads, or, um, I'm pretty sure it wasn't a fire situation. Just, I didn't mean to put, you know, I thought it was...
Yeah, right.
A better memory than mine that would have...
Yeah, yeah, it, it's, it's regarding FEMA. It's a completed project, and I, I believe it, it, D. R. four-six-nine-six is the designation that FEMA applied to that particular disaster.
And you read it tonight for our benefit in what context again?
Uh, for the sake of transparency, we're gonna do our, our best to communicate to the public, the weekly reports that we receive from the Public Works Director, the Fire and E. M. S. Director, the Parks and Rec Director, and the Code Enforcement Office. It's, it's just a way of making sure that we can get as much information out to the public as possible.
Work had been done on Christian Hill Road because of washouts, bombing, previous year, and so FEMA can reimburse some of the cost of those, um, repairs if they qualify under, um, a natural disaster, well, they call it, you know, an event that, that qualifies for federal money. And so all they were doing was asking for additional information, um, just to shore up their report.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks. Um, I know you read it, and it just sounded like that part was a little, um, assuming that we all knew what you were talking about, so maybe everybody else. But thank you for that explanation, Tammy. I know FEMA funds are there, and it's good. There is something on the website about that now, too. There was a deadline, I think. It was one of the four boxes right at the top of the...
Yeah, every time that something happens, um...
For people to reply.
There, there's possibility for reimbursement for things, um, like the January, um, but that was mostly coastal, you know, the high waves and, you know, the coastal erosion that happened, even though York County was involved, you know, we're not near the coast, so, uh, we weren't eligible for things like that, but like the past snow, rain, heavy broken trees event, things like that become available, and we try to make sure that, um, we gather as much information as we can, because you have to meet a dollar threshold also for it to even become a FEMA event. So, they just, they gathering information most times.
And there were designations about the two January storms, uh, that you, you all had on the website, and if there get to be designations about the April storm also, you all will put that right on the website.
Yes, that will certainly be notified.
For our benefit also.
Yeah, FEMA put something out that we read about a couple of weeks ago for homeowners, landowners, right, and tree and debris on your own personal property and how to deal with that. So, that's, I think that's on the, the town website as well, for personal homeowners, not necessarily for the town as a whole, what to deal with, but for people who, who own land.
Yeah, good.
And how to deal with it.
People who will be looking at the website and want to know, there's information.
Yeah, we're trying to put as much as we can out there now that the people, is, is a tab on the Limmington website that says information, and that's where all of these, uh, you could, these links are. There's a, you know, a heading. You'll know what, exactly what you're, you're clicking on, like the, um, the burn permit rules, you know, just click on that, that pops up, and you can read that.
Are you saying you do have to, not that it's a chore, but are you directing us to go to that information tab up top?
Yep.
That these won't be in the boxes, right?
They'll be listed. They're listed right on the left.
Okay.
After you click on the information tab.
Okay.
Yep, they're all right there.
Sometimes there are four boxes or so right on the cover page, right at the very top. You don't have to go anywhere other than looking at those boxes.
Oh, okay.
For instance, about, oh, a public hearing coming up sometimes, or an agenda.
Yes, that's there on the front, but that, not all, not all of these documents that we're putting is on the front page.
Go to the information tab.
Go to the information tab that's on the top.
Thank you.
Yep.
Secondly, Mike, when you mentioned the Moi Modeo, quite high iron content of the water there, and you said the filter would need to be replaced often, can't help but ask, has it been replaced right, right away?
Yes, yes. Uh, recently, we put in a new filter. It was a household iron filter. It didn't quite meet the needs of the beach. It got clogged almost immediately, so we're getting a different filter put in, and this one is going, will still need to be replaced in, in rather good frequency, but it should operate better than the one we had in there before.
Can you assure us somebody's staying on top of that, like on a very frequent basis?
Yep.
We're about to start the summer. Kids will be drinking from the fountain.
Yep, yep. Madison is on top of that situation, and I, as a, uh, beach attendant, will be making sure that it is properly cared for.
Thank you. It sounded in the critically high realm or something like that.
It, it is extremely high, uh, but it, it, from what I was reading, it doesn't seem like it's, uh, a hu, a hazard to human life.
Don't drink the water and go buy a magnet.
Drink enough of this, and you're in a lightning storm. Who knows what could happen? No, 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 that, joke, joke. I, I assure you, that is a joke.
That's fine, but you'll stay on top of it.
Yes, we will. We will make sure that, that our children's health and safety is of the utmost importance, and we would not, um, allow a, a water source to hurt them.
Thank you. Just 'cause, you know, we, over the years, the Well Asso, the Limmington Academy Well Association has tried to stay on top of those, um, readings, those measurements, and I know the water's tested, uh...
High for manganese over at the well.
A couple of other places in town, so it's great that if it does, if it's water for the public, that we stay on top of it.
Exactly.
And just the last thing, um, really appreciate your mentioning the ordinances tonight, Tammy, and I know you did last week, Jason, uh, and I think I've heard that you, uh, we have a public hearing on the proposed referent, on the referendum votes, which will include the ordinance changes coming up May thirtieth, yes?
Yes.
And at the same time, I, I was under the impression that you all were going to take some time each week to hit the highlights about those, uh, those referendum votes, and perhaps you did tonight, but I, I got the feeling it was gonna be... And perhaps you did tonight, but I, I got the feeling it was gonna be a little bit more. And I don't know, I, I just had that feeling, um, and-
Yeah, no, you're looking at me, yes.
Well, no.
I've got it in front of me. I just, my voice is a little off this-
Jason had a hard time talking.
Yeah, it's been a little rough today, so.
I, I'm, I just wanted to ask whether tonight, and I'm grateful that it was mentioned, and I think your plan is to keep it in the, to help the public understand what they're going to be voting on. There are several measures.
Absolutely.
Yeah, so I just asked if that was your intention tonight or maybe if there was more. And I think you're also going to place an ad in the paper and I'll-
Yep, there will be an ad a week before, uh, the June vote in the, in the paper. That's gonna be all these bullet points. Um, I also will have these on the Limington pages as well as we go forward. I'm gonna post them as an information only. Um, there, no, there won't be any comments on it. It's just simply put out there for the public that's on social media to be able to see these bullet points as well. Um, it's just, uh, once again, it's very, it, it's just a lot of tightening up across these ordinances. Um, and it's, it's made to protect the people of the town first and foremost. And, uh, just, you know, following like the extraction industry, quick touch base, it's, it's following the DEP. It's basically the DEP requirements. And all we're doing is just trying to specifically make it a little easier to the public to understand, is what this is doing. The, the subdivision ordinance is more, it's fire protection, public safety, sister and stuff. It, it's, it's, once again, it's here to protect the, the people of the town more so. It's not here to cause to anybody any more money. These are generally not gonna cost anybody money. It may cost the town money if some of them don't pass, such as the flood referendum. That's gotta pass to protect the town. We have a natural disaster and we lose a bridge or we lose a culvert, um, we're not gonna get money. We're gonna have to pay for ourselves as a town. That's a huge expense, let alone people that live in the flood zone. They're, you know, they may not get insured or covered if this doesn't pass, so. And then the LD two thousand three, that really should pass only because it's gonna be mandated regardless of what we do per the state. The state's gonna say, well, this is how it is and all we're trying to do is copy the state and put it in our, our ordinances so they have a one hundred percent understanding going forward. And I will try to touch base more. It's just, I've had a little issue talking today, so. So.
We are gonna mention it every single Thursday until the June eighteenth.
Yep.
Thank you, Jason. Uh, thank you, Bonnie. Uh, any other comments from the public tonight? Seeing none, I will, uh, entertain a motion to adjourn.
I will make a motion that we adjourn.
And I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor? We are adjourned at seven thirty-two PM. Thank you, everybody, and stay tuned for the Financial Advisory Committee meeting.
All right, take two. We're all meeting to order at seven thirty-five. And the first order of business is approval of minutes from our last meeting. Those who are distributed.
Email them.
Yes, uh, I make a motion, we approve the minutes as read.
And second?
Second.
All in favor? So, our business tonight is our questions to Patty and to help us improve our function. I believe that's our old, maybe, maybe only business, but certainly-
Yes, we need an education from Patty.
Well, I don't know how much of an education I can give you.
Is it easier if you sit up here, Patty, rather than me there or?
Well, it's good, works for me.
We can flip a microphone around for you.
Yeah, there's extra, there's extra lights here.
Steve didn't bring us caramel tonight, though, so I can talk.
So.
Okay.
Okay. So, I'm not sure. Steve sent me a little list of what he thought might be the questions. One was, how do we calculate the mill rate? That's not a simple thing to- There is this eighteen-page report that has to be filled with. It's called the Main Revenue Service Municipal Valuation Return. So, that has to be filled in, all the lines. And from that, you get information that goes on one of these, which I, I took a copy of previous years, so you could all see how it gets. From the information that comes off of that return, you fill in this, this little formula sheet. And that's how the tax rate is calculated. I don't know if there's more questions beyond that. It's, it's a process. It's not just something we say, oh, we're gonna charge you blah blah this month, this year.
I think part of the reason we were wondering how to, how this works is if we were to recommend, you know, a five-hundred-thousand-dollar, uh, investment in our capital improvement fund, how does that affect the mill rate? Or if we, uh, okay, you know, different parts of the budget?
Yeah. Yeah.
Is there any sense of, like, for every, you know, hundred thousand dollars added to the, uh, expenditures?
Right.
Impact? That's what we're trying to-
Yeah, it would depend on what our assessment is for that year.
Okay.
So.
When you say assessment, you mean real estate assessments?
Yes.
Okay. Who does those?
Uh, well, we have a professional we hire that comes in and does those.
Every year?
Yes.
Oh.
And then-
They update annually.
Okay.
Yes, okay. Update annually, yeah.
Yeah.
We haven't had a, a total reeval, they call it. We haven't had one of those since two thousand six.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay.
But he comes in and updates all the new properties.
That's where the three-hundred-and-forty-four million dollars comes from.
Right, right.
Yeah, it does an effect the last ten years. Doesn't, they don't reevaluate the old properties, let's say, just the new stuff.
Right, except for last year, they did what they called a property tax factoring adjustment, which everybody went up. No, the, the assessor did.
Oh, was the assessor?
Right, because the state, if the state, I don't know how the state gets-
Revenue sharing.
Right. If they get their value down below seventy-three percent, then the state gets after us and says, you're not gonna get any state aid, whatever. So, we were down to fifty-nine percent. So, we had to do something.
So, this line one will, we assume, change positively negatively when we do a total reevaluation? Is that the term?
Right. I mean, it changes a little every year because of new homes and whatever.
Yep.
But what, what will happen is, is that, I mean, some will go up, some will go down. So, uh, so who knows where the net will be?
Be.
Correct.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
What would make things go down?
Unlikely, but in my optimistic world.
Yeah, yeah. If you had a new home in two thousand six when they did their value and you haven't done a thing to it for
Yeah.
How many years? What are we working on? Twenty, twenty years?
Yeah, yeah.
It's gone downhill. The grade of your home would be less, so your value probably would go down.
Well, unlike the land value, it seems like a building a lot now is eighty-nine thousand dollars. But to sell it, it's not eighty-nine thousand dollars. It might be seventy-five or in that range.
Yeah.
Well, right.
So, that may get reevaluated to lower that and who knows?
And in particular with what happened this past year, I mean, who knows what, when that gets leveled out, what that will look like?
Right.
Some may actually go down, some may go up.
Well, especially if, I know that revaluations, professional revaluations that I've lived through, the assessor looks at the inside of the house.
Mm-hmm.
And if the inside of the house hasn't been updated for fifty years, your valuation may, may go down.
May go down.
You know, the, the market value adjustment we had done this last year didn't include that kind of a thorough investigation. It's just, you know, here's the house and here's the property it's on. And this is what comparable houses are selling for in the area and there you are, but, uh-
Oh, I don't think it was even that.
No, it was just a fifty percent increase.
It was literally a straight line. There were, there were assumptions made about just market, yeah.
There, there is a good chance that there will be some properties that will go down their value, but I, I don't think much.
So, in your educated guesstimate, how much do you see this move from year to year? Does it go up three percent, down one percent, up ten percent?
Yeah, um, basically, I don't really look at this much, 'cause this isn't, this is part of the assessing job, not-
Okay.
Not the tax collecting job, so.
Right.
I don't see this much. And actually, looking at this one, this is twenty-nineteen. So, this is an old one that doesn't affect last year's revalue, so.
Right.
You wanna double that figure.
Would that be, would that be in this book?
I was gonna say, where's this number? Where do people see it?
It has to go up, I would think.
Yeah, um-
Just because new, new structure.
Would be out on the table in the commitment book, I guess.
So, the historic ones should be out there as well?
Because everybody else is doing the same.
The previous, the current year is out there. We, we have the, all the others if someone wants to look at them.
I think you gotta get back in the habit of having them in the town before annually. That way, people can keep those and then they can do a comparison if they want to over time.
Does she?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Um, okay, so the valuation makes an impact to the mill rate. What else would you say are drivers that we may control? 'Cause we can't control, um, you know, the, the county taxes or the school taxes.
I would say, so the only one we can control is the local appropriations, so.
Net, yeah, fifteen, right?
Where, where is it? What line?
Line ten.
What you spend, basically.
Oh, no.
Oh, local education.
No, that's local.
No, that's local education.
Yeah, um, municipal appropriations, where is that? How many taxes? Oh, line eight, eight.
Yeah. And so where does that, um, municipal appropriation, like this is two-point-four million from two thousand nineteen?
Yeah.
Where, is this the town budget?
Yes.
Okay, so for example, for this past year, it was, I don't know, I mean, does, this does not include the schools, right? Because the schools are separate.
Right.
Okay, so this is the town. It was around four million, four, four and a half, something like that. Okay.
Yeah.
So, this is the town budget.
Yeah, we haven't done this yet for this year. That's why I don't have this year's. Somebody's gotta start working on this eighteen-page report.
Sounds like so much fun. Okay.
The assessor's job.
Yeah.
So, yeah, I, it's hard to wrap our heads around the impact of decisions that we would recommend. And I, I get the sense of that from here.
Yeah, I do.
I mean, I think it really just comes down to the higher the town budget, you know, the higher, the more that gets allocated through the mill rate.
If you wanna see how the mill rate would be impacted, though, you can take, for example, use the, the capital reserve, right? Five-hundred-thousand divided into the town's valuation will give you the mill rate of that specific dollar amount. So, every article or every department, whatever, you can divide that into the valuation and you know what the mill rate for that article is. If you wanna see how much it changes, then you can, you can get the current mill rate, get what the new mill rate would be, and then subtract the difference.
Can you repeat that again?
The, the bottom line is, is you need a number to divide into the valuation.
So, if we take the municipal appropriation, divide it into
Line one?
Into line one, the taxable valuation.
Right.
Well, line three, actually, is a total.
Line three?
Yeah.
Yeah. So, interestingly, you know, a half a million dollars divided by three-hundred-and-forty-six million, one-hundred-and-sixty-three, nine-twenty-seven, it's pennies. It, it's not even a penny. It's point zero-zero-one-four cents per thousand dollars. That's per thousand dollars. Then, let's say somebody has a home valuation of three-hundred thousand, um, that's four-hundred-and-thirty-three dollars for somebody who has a half-a-million-dollar valuation.
Yeah.
For a half-a-million-dollar
Point six-nine percent.
Addition to the budget.
Right.
This is, this is, this is the formula that we need.
Right, so we need to then take what our appropriation would be and divide it into line three. And that should give us that impact.
So, at the beginning of the budget season, if you were to disperse the town's valuation at that point to each department, we could come in with what our in, uh, what our change in budget proposal, how that would impact the, the mill rate.
Right.
We could have that for you.
Right. That's interesting.
Yeah.
And that's less than half of our, you know, municipal is, is less than half of the total expenses.
Right.
Right.
It's like forty-six percent.
On your tax bill, it will tell you how many dollars of the ten-dollar-and-twenty-three cent tax rate per thousand. How much was, I think it was four dollars and something was town.
Right.
Now, three dollars and some, six dollars and something was school.
Yep.
Counties only cents.
Yep.
So, this isn't that much.
Okay. Um, that's helpful. 'Cause we're always thinking, like, how is this going to impact
Yeah.
Yeah.
That mill rate and really it's-
Now I see what you're looking for, yeah. I can probably get you some better information.
It has to be big numbers to have any meaningful impact per, per dollar.
Right. I mean, we'd really have to put a lot of money in there for it to-
We would. Like the math, I just did half a million. And this is, this is five years old.
Correct.
So, you know, I suspect the number is much larger now for two reasons.
Double.
So, you know, I suspect the number is much larger now, for two reasons, growth.
Yeah, it's about double, yeah.
And
Yeah.
just market increase.
Okay, that's helpful.
Hmm.
Mm-hmm.
That's very helpful, yeah.
So when, when will we know, like, this is an example, when would we know the two thousand and twenty-three or four valuation?
Hopefully, we'll have the twenty-four. Well, it's gotta be on by the end of next month, next month, because tax bills need to go out, so.
Right.
Okay, so they have to be in by the end of June.
Yeah.
Because that's what the, the new tax bill, okay.
When do we get the, the district, the school district information, you know, the budget, is that already done?
They have it out, yeah, we vote on it next month.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, actually, they were here last week, I think.
Yes, it presented, yes.
I have, yeah, I have it out.
And what's their number?
What's that increase?
Uh.
Oh, was it?
Cause they did like fifteen percent calculation on ours, right, and it's only seven point something.
Hmm.
Still big.
Right.
So, if I'm reading this correctly.
Is that down from previous years?
Oh, yeah.
Like, why do we go fifteen percent if? If it's.
When, when did they calculate, I don't think anything's been calculated yet.
Well, they, 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 in the, um.
Select, select board.
We get, yeah. Anything else on that first question?
No, I'm just curious to take this school board number and what our number is and kind of play with numbers. The number, pardon me.
I can get you some better numbers.
Okay, school board number for fiscal year twenty-four for Leamington, um, is four million, one eleven, nine eighty-one.
Four million, one, one eleven, nine eighty-one.
Point zero five. But what's a nickel between friends?
It could make or break us, come on. Okay, all right.
So, we can, we can get new ones of these?
Yes, yeah, I'll get you some of these, I couldn't find last year's.
Actually, let me just ask something, so this is fiscal year twenty-four, that's that number, for, for some reason, fiscal year's twenty-five is on here, are we really voting on twenty-five?
Well, they, they, they are a fiscal year, so they go twenty-four, twenty-five.
But there's two numbers, there's a twenty-four and there's a twenty-five, for our purposes, are we voting on two thousand and twenty-five? Because the school year will go into that. Uh, it's a difference of three hundred thousand dollars, that's why I'm asking, I just, I don't know.
I think twenty-four would be the current budget, right, because you go twenty-three, twenty-four, then it's twenty-four, twenty-five.
Four, or twenty-five.
That's what I'm thinking, yeah, so it's four, 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 two, two, and one, six, seven.
Four, four. Okay.
Do you move to the next question on the list there?
Yep, I'm ready.
Somebody have that in front of them?
Yeah, uh, mill rate, updated budget from town meeting, um, how's this done? I mean, for me, I think we just wanna sort of understand kind of globally, how does, like, where do the revenues flow in? Um, it's hard to understand where they are in here, I know there's a treasurer's report, so we're just trying to understand, what's the revenue stream compared to all we see as the expense budget?
Right.
And, and then, at the end of the day, what's the net, and that's what I'm trying to get to.
Well, revenues do not flow into anything, except for the general fund.
Okay, all revenues go to the general fund?
Right.
Okay.
Except for maybe there's a few donation accounts and general assistance reimbursements from the state.
Okay.
But that's very small stuff.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, but like, all the things from, um, rec parks and rec and all that, that all goes to the general fund.
To the general fund, and then, that's the figure, the five hundred thousand dollar figure you use to offset the current budget, is the money that's sitting in the general fund.
And wasn't the general fund, like, at one point six million or something in the last, I thought I saw something like that. I don't remember what it was.
Yeah, it, maybe when taxes came in in November, it might have gotten up that high, but it's, it's down to two now.
Two hundred thousand?
Two million.
Oh, two million?
Yeah.
Okay, that's a, no, okay, that's an increase, I thought it was one point six million.
Yeah, so here are those revenue sheets, I printed them on bigger paper just so you could see them, but.
Oh, thank you.
So, the problem we have as a town is we run on a calendar year, January through December, and a lot of other things are fiscal year, and we don't collect taxes until August, so we need money to run the town from January through August before the new tax commitment is assessed. So we try to keep some money in the, in the general fund to do that. I've been here twenty-eight years, we've only had to borrow twice in that twenty-eight years, so.
Just curious, do you know, is that defined somewhere, can we change that?
Change what?
From fiscal year, uh, I mean, from calendar year to fiscal year?
We have to vote on it.
Are there advantages to one or the other?
Well, advantage would be, it would put us on the same calendar as the school district and everything else, the disadvantage is you've got that extra six months, we're gonna have to pay for somehow.
Mm-hmm.
So you're gonna have to have a year where you're gonna have to tax for eighteen months instead of twelve. Yeah.
So the transition, that's the problem, okay.
Yes, yes, yeah. It, it was mentioned, we tried, brought it to the people once before, but it didn't fly, so.
So all of the money flows into the general fund.
Mm-hmm.
Then from the general fund, things get allocated out, so if I was to look at this, you have your total income.
Yeah. The three hundred, I'm sorry, that doesn't say, that's the beginning balance, that's three hundred and four.
So the three point four, yeah, is your beginning balance.
Three million, yeah. Yeah, sorry, there should be.
Yep, that's fine, um, and then we have our income.
Yeah.
And then our expenses, so our ending balance is at two point one.
Yeah.
Now, we in July start getting tax money, when are our tax, when are our taxes?
Yeah, August first.
August.
August, August first. That's really bad of me, sorry. Um, so then, we will see this number, so it's then we'll start seeing this number jump.
The income number.
The income number jump from property taxes.
Mm-hmm.
And our expenses theoretically should stay pretty flat, correct?
Well, that's usually when they jump, because then we start doing paving and
Mm-hmm.
That's when they allow people to purchase the big stuff that they won't purchase. Till then, they kind of hold you on reins, right, you know?
The excise tax.
Just depends how good you talk.
How does that come in, does that come in in lumps or?
No, that's every time someone registers a vehicle, you pay excise tax.
Every month.
Right, I didn't know if the state gives it back to us, we just take it before it goes to the state, okay.
Yes, yeah, yeah.
So that's ongoing income.
Yes, yeah.
Is this seventy, seventy-five-ish, pretty average, do you think, like, do you see any seasonality in that number?
Um, yeah, I think it is, I mean, it used to be lower, but that's, it's gone up, so.
Okay, which one is this, or I'm not.
The motor vehicle excise tax, um, I don't have a line number, it's this, um,
Oh, okay.
No.
The total is three, three hundred and seven thousand.
Yeah, I got it.
Yeah.
So then the tax commitment up at the top, the two thousand and twenty-four, I mean, that's, that's just some one-offs, right, I mean, that's.
Yeah, people that are prepaying.
Right, I mean, that will take, that's where the money will show, when taxes go out on August first.
Yes. Yes.
Or the valuation.
Yeah, yeah.
And so, how does money come out of the general fund? Is that, is that where all the expenses are paid out of?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
And that's, you know, at the previous meeting here, where they're taking money out each week.
Right.
But it goes through the select board process.
Right.
Right.
So, right, somebody buys a box of pens for fourteen dollars and twenty-three cents.
And specific expense accounts, yeah.
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 It comes out of it that way.
Yeah.
Monthly, okay.
Payroll.
But it can't exceed what the voters have offered.
Right.
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 So, help us understand.
Not supposed to.
So, I don't remember which article it was, that the amount, I think it was article two, where the ten, general town operations, um, the article was put in for seven hundred and seventy thousand, the twenty twenty-three budget was seven hundred and thirty thousand, that number, I believe this is the one that got adjusted, okay, so how does that then impact and roll into the budget, so how do you know, based off from these, and I'm, I'm assuming that you have like an ex, so this is your income, I'm assuming that you have an expense one, where you are to budget on those expenses? So, um, if I just pick the town official, uh, town officials, their twenty twenty-three budget was a hundred and twenty-two thousand, twenty twenty-four budget was a hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Okay.
Where are they, like, how does that, how does that get adjusted when it's voted down and reallocated?
Well, I went through the list, if you go to the spreadsheets, a couple pages beyond the.
Yeah, this, right?
Yes.
Yeah, so somebody's maintaining this.
Yes.
Um, like, whoever's paying the bills.
Yeah.
And is that?
That's you.
Is it, is he, well.
No, Nikki.
Nikki, right.
Okay.
So she, so somewhere in the spreadsheet, she must have updated numbers.
Right.
Okay.
Right.
So this is the entire expense spreadsheet, and literally, does she use this spreadsheet?
No, no, we have a program that does that, that spreadsheet is just because the program, to print out the report for the program, it's like a hundred pages.
Okay.
So, to make it smaller and less pages for the book, it's, we condense it down.
Right. So it's transferring it manually into this?
Um, yes, I think Stanley was keeping that when he was in, so.
Okay.
So, I think this is one of our questions, and I don't know if we're going out of order, but is this a format that we have to keep, or is it a format that can be changed, or is this just the format that we've always had, so this is what we do?
Yeah, that's what we've always had, it's also what we do, but.
Okay.
But somebody's got a better suggestion and.
Okay, cause you were just saying that Stanley's keeping this, so.
Yes, that spreadsheet, yes, yeah.
Patty's not in the hot seat.
Happy municipal.
We're in the hot seat.
She's educating us. I know she can, I know she can, because that was something, like, we were just really confused, typically, you have your income, your cost of goods, your expenses, your net income, and it just seems like you're kind of flipping from one spot to another spot and trying to figure out what is, what's what, um.
Right. But I think it's because, like I said before, basically, there is no income.
Well, this is your income.
Right.
It is, but it's, you know, it, it doesn't feed, you can't spend this without being voted on in an article in there, so.
Right, right, but I think for my brain, um, I need to see the income to then say, I can spend this, it's no different than at home, if I don't have the paycheck coming in, I can't spend the money out, and it feels like this is backwards, like.
It is backwards.
It is, but, yeah, I was gonna say.
We spend, we spend the money and then we say, this is what.
Because we can't know what we, what we need for income until you tell us what you wanna spend.
Right, but if I can look at the, if I can look at the historical income.
Take a credit card.
Right.
Yeah, if I can look at the historical income averages, then I can, you know, give an educated guess as to what the future might hold.
And for some, and it's, it's really for some particular departments, right, uh, for example, um, recreation, you know, there's, there's real revenue being generated there. It's helpful to understand that, particularly when people are looking at an increase in, in expense, but there's been an income and revenue, I mean, that's the part that would be helpful.
Yeah.
Right, like, he's already brought in from Camp Mamadale, he's already borrowed in almost thirty-six thousand dollars.
Mm-hmm.
And we haven't hit summer yet, when, that's probably when the most revenue will flow.
Well, this is for summer camp, and summer camp has to be paid for by.
The end of June.
Right, so you've got one more, well, no, you've got, yeah, you've got two more months.
So this is current.
Yeah.
This is through end of, end of April. So you'd have May, June. So this income offsets his expenses, so to speak, I know it's not, I know it's on.
Right, it's not technically how the money, it all goes into the general fund, but that's what, that's what would be helpful, is for people to understand,
Yeah.
you know, if you're voting on, I'm just thinking, four hundred thousand dollars for the rec program, but they're bringing in five or four hundred, it's a net zero.
Right. Right.
Right.
And that works for parks and rec.
Yeah.
But it doesn't work for the, the EMS, the fire department, those are things, that's kind of the backwards part of it, the town says, we need this.
Correct.
And then.
Well, it's essential services, public works, essential services.
Right.
Now, income has to come in to cover that.
Right.
So there's leisure, let's say the parks and rec, and maybe there are other groups that bring in money, um.
Right, they are.
Not much, well, code enforcement.
Yeah, that's an essential service too.
For example, where we had, I'm gonna clean up my language here, a less than thorough code enforcement process, which wasn't bringing in as much fees, and now we spent more money on code enforcement, but it brings in fees to offset that.
Correct. And, I mean, EMO brings in, well, fire and EMS brings in money in their billings, the third parties and all that stuff, so.
Right.
He doesn't just cost us money.
And that goes to general fund?
Right, it's just good for people to see that.
That money is set aside.
All of it?
His rescue, yeah, EMS billing money, yes.
That's why you can see in the back.
The insurance.
Yes.
No, that's where the, so his medical, his EMS medical billing account, that's where they take the money from the fire EMS to put into the general fund, is it going to the general fund?
It serves as an offset.
Offset, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Oh, I just wanted to make sure you didn't have any questions for the select board before I left for the evening.
Yeah, we might, it might be the last question.
I think, I think you're good, I appreciate you.
I've been plenty today.
Thank you for all that you do, everybody.
Yes.
Sure.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
All right. What else are questions that we have, and I typed them up, isn't that awful?
Well, then you asked for the treasurer's report, but it sounds like you also want the expense distribution report, so, we can get you that too, when, I guess, yeah, my, my thing to that was, I would gladly get you what you need, let me know when you're meeting.
Yes, yeah.
I'll send you a, a list.
We'll send you the calendar, um, yeah, cause it would just be helpful to know, because I know that it was brought up in the town meeting,
Okay, okay. Yeah.
Um, you know, the, the numbers and so on, like, getting, if we weren't if not all of the funds were spent, that it just goes back into the general, into the general fund, like, you know, what is a comfortable balance in the general fund, like, what do we like to see it at?
Yeah, well, I think, what did we have last year, we had almost three and a half million at the end of the year, so, that's probably.
Where we like to, what, that's where we like to see it for the end of the year, to start to get ourselves through
August.
to August.
Right.
Um, okay.
That's helpful information, because I don't have that much in my check anymore.
No. But as you can see, we spend almost a million every month, so seven hundred thousand, six hundred seventy-nine thousand, six hundred thousand, so.
Right. So it's good to know what, what's the, the right kind of question to have.
Yeah.
Okay.
But, like I said, we, we don't usually borrow, which we always thought was a good thing.
Yeah.
But now I'm beginning to wonder if it is a good thing, because I think that with the state, I'm not sure how the state does their values.
Yeah.
But it seems like Leamington, when it comes to the school budget, Leamington is always one of the higher ones to increase. And I think it's because we don't have any debt.
Oh wow.
See, Stanish has a lot of debt, and I think the state takes that into consideration.
So.
And that's why their value on a school budget doesn't go up as much as Leamington's does, because they think we're a richer town.
So how does that, like, come about the credit rating is, whoa, because you don't owe anybody any money?
But we got the first.
Yeah.
Exactly, that's exactly.
What do you mean?
That's exactly, now, this is just my, my brain thinking, so, but.
So how?
Would that, uh, change?
It seems, over the years, that's how it's been, so.
So let's say, just hypothetically, uh, this building isn't gonna be big enough five years from now, if we were to take out a, you know, two million dollar loan.
Bond, yeah.
Then would the, do you think that might, I mean, I know you're not the state.
Yeah. Right.
That's the thinking that you're kind of wondering about there.
Yes.
How can we, how can we educate ourselves on that? Cause that's really interesting that you've noticed that factor, like, how, how do we educate ourselves as the finance committee, the select board, the town?
Like, how, how does the state calculate the, the school allocations?
So that's the revenue sharing?
Because the state does it.
Right, the state does it, yeah, and like I said, I don't know how they do it, I don't even think the school board knows how they do it.
Right, well, I mean, it's like us looking at these and being like, okay, here's your budget for next year, folks, um.
I always thought it was good not to owe money.
Is it revenue sharing, is that what we're talking about, the state revenue?
No, just the state value, the state values each town, they put, they put a value on each town.
No. Okay, and what does that mean?
And so we don't know what those elements are.
Well, that goes into the formula of how the school budget is determined, how much each town pays.
Cause they don't use the town's valuation, right? They use the state.
Right.
Right. And so because Leamington does not borrow money.
Like I said, this is my thing, I, I don't know if that's true or not.
Well, I think it's an interesting observation.
So it's not, it's not per child.
So this is where I wonder if the select board knows.
Not, no, it's not per child, no.
Nothing per child.
I wonder if they know how the, how the school budget is calculated.
See, of course he left, I know, told you we would have a question for him.
No, I don't think, he's, he's not gonna know.
You don't think, you don't think?
No, but I think that it's something that they need to know.
Cause I, even the man when he was standing here talking, I don't even think they know how the state comes up with these figures.
Okay.
Who, who would know that?
I don't know, whether we can find out from the state, yeah, yeah.
So, I wrote that down as a question for us to try to.
Okay. Yeah, okay. Cause that is interesting, if we're, you know, if we're talking about, you know, expansion of the municipal center, is this something that we need to allocate in or plan to allocate in capital improvements? Or do we say, hey, if we were to borrow X and raise X, then this may help with our state valuation, which could offset with the school budget?
Patty, I don't know if you noticed this enough, but when he was presenting the budget, they knew that we had done an adjustment, because our percentage of increase changed based on our valuation. So, um, I'm wondering what the negative impact was on this market adjustment? Because now, if we're, if we're getting a bigger increase because of our valuation, did we lose what we gained?
Right, right. And I think that this is something, as a, as a taxpayer, that the town needs to know, because you're right, we're increasing our, our taxable valuation of the real estate and not borrowing money, is it being detrimental? Because now the school budget is being significantly increased. So that would be interesting for us to find out.
And when you say borrowing money, like, do we have a credit line with a bank, or like literally, how does this work?
It'd be a bond, they have to take out.
Have to take out a bond.
Okay, and does that require a vote?
Or if, um, if we didn't have enough money to pay our bills until the tax season came in, they had this, it's called a tax anticipation note.
Yeah.
The bank would loan us X amount of dollars until taxes come in, and then we pay it back in one lump sum, when the money starts coming in.
Okay.
And that's part of the housekeeping articles, right, that we vote on?
Yes, yeah.
Authorizes that in, in the event that it's.
Needed, you know.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
What else?
You had discussed P and L format, but I don't.
I think that's this.
The, yeah, so in a regular business, again, you have your income, your expenses, your net income, so it's kind of, it's kind of this, if you have the income and then the expenses being all of this. So I think if we had this, and then minus all the expenses, which is really your total warrants. But I would just be curious, if you take your total warrants for January, this is what was spent, what does that look like compared to what was the actual number? So, this is what the warrant was, this is what the actual number was, where are we at percentage to?
Yeah, so you, you wanted an expense distribution report.
Yes, I guess that's the report that I'm looking for.
Just what the, what the budget was.
Yes.
Voted on, what the budget was, how much has been spent so far and what's left.
Right, because I think where we start talking about the budgets in, you know, October, November, you know, there's still several months left to go, but if we can know, oh, this is what they've been averaging per month, this is what we've got left in the year, this is where they should be. Well, Emil, you're on track to not even meet what we spent last year, why are you now asking for an increase? You're always here, so I'm always picking on you.
I have your answer.
But it could be because you need an increase in employees, you need an, you know.
For example, eight hundred and twenty dollars of my increase for firing events was something other than payroll. So, we had in payroll for the three percent increase, was fifty-five thousand dollars of increase in my budget.
Right.
And outside of that, it was eight hundred and twenty dollars.
But this is, this is where it's really good for us to be able to look at it and then have these conversations, so we know, um, what we're proposing.
Yeah, and then, you know, we also talked about just, we've got to figure out sort of what format works in the book, but there needs to be a place. And we also talked about using the same format for everybody to use for their budgets.
Right.
And then having a place for comments that are published, because that would cut down a lot of the questions, I think, um, the day of town meeting. Because if you can explain the variance.
Right.
So Emil has offered a lot of help with this, I have copies of the forms he sent. I think our next step is to ask the select board, uh, maybe there are other steps, but to give to the select board our hopes for what they will require for each department as they present their budget.
Yeah, that and just, it would be interesting to know if there's any way, whatever can get automated out of the system. Because whatever could be automated, if we can get it, that would just make it easier, because, you know, there, you're just spreadsheet, manual spreadsheets are prone to error. Um, for both formulas and, um, key, keystrokes, all that. Um, if we could get something in a usable format out of the system, that would be great. Do we, have, has that been explored and it's just not possible?
Um, well, like I said, you can get the expense distribution report, um, as far as the revenue, adding revenue in.
As departments, we don't have access to that, so we would still have to, still manually give stuff, so.
That I'm not sure. Yeah. Right.
Well, can, well, the expense distribution report, can it be run monthly?
Yes.
So, could departments get that monthly?
Yep.
And then that would tell you where you are.
Right, I'm saying, as far as building our budget on it, we would still have to manually build it.
Yeah. But if we could see the format, that might be, so whatever it is that we use, it would be great if it, it was seamless for everybody. Um, so that's part of what we're trying to understand too, is like, who uses what? We don't, so I do think we, we ought to talk with the select board too, to understand what are they looking at from a financial perspective, on a regular basis.
Right.
But, when department heads come to present their budget, it's not all in the same format.
No, that's why we want to propose.
Right, correct. We do want to propose, yeah.
A new format of X, like what Emil has provided us, what his samples are.
Right.
But like, if select board, if they're not using anything close to this, like, what are they using when they're looking at it and thinking about? So I don't know, maybe this is what they use. So, it'd be interesting to know what they, what they see.
Curious on your opinion. And you've been doing this for a very long time, do you find this format easy to navigate if a regular citizen comes in and starts asking questions, like to direct them to some of these things? Or do you find it, that it's confusing to others?
Oh, yeah.
Um. I can see where it is confusing to others, I know how to navigate through it, but I can see where it's confusing to others.
Right.
When you have to flop from this page to that page.
Right.
Even at town meeting, we, I'll go to page eighteen, I'll go back to six.
Right, yeah. It, it does get really confusing, and everybody's trying to flip flop to the pages, and so all you hear is, and people are talking, and then, so, I do, I love the idea of like a comments thing, so if there's something that's, um.
Anything more than like a ten percent variance, like why?
Right.
What's, what's the reason?
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
Um, cause you know, if you look at, there's computers, just leisure services had computer sort, computer support services has a, I don't know, like a two million dollar variance here. Um, but it's literally like a two thousand dollar line, but it's because there was a zero here, and he goes to two thousand dollars, well, you could have like a simple little line stating, this is why this variance is, cause somebody may just be looking down through and seeing, oh, why is this huge budget?
Okay.
That would eliminate a lot of questions.
Yes.
Just give them the variance, the percentage increase.
No.
There you go, Garrett.
No.
We wanna make it smoother.
Correct, correct.
So this is actually a pretty good report here, this expense summary report?
Yeah.
I mean, if it's a new item.
Um, that is what we're talking about for my expense.
That's why, you know, everything.
Doesn't have percentages on it, now is that system generated?
Yes.
Okay.
So we just need to get you the dates of our meeting to get.
Yep, we'll make sure you have the reports, yep.
Can those be exported into Excel?
Computer, there was no computer support.
Some can, some can.
Cause something like that, if it could be exported to Excel, you can easily, yeah, percentages on it.
Okay, you probably didn't have that computer support. All that software, it costs money, only need to be five years or something.
Yep.
So, what I'm also hearing then is just, um, what gets printed or how it gets printed, there's flexibility in that.
Yes.
Okay, wonderful.
What other questions do we have for Patty?
So if I think about cash flow, the money comes in through here, gets spent through the warrant, and then our savings, so to speak, the checking account right now has a balance of two point one million.
Yeah.
Um, and that will continue to dwindle here about, you know.
Yeah, till mid-July, yeah.
Yeah.
Another one point five or so.
Yeah, so it'll get down.
For two months? June, well, no, this is May, June, July, so three months.
Yeah.
Three months, and we do bring in, as you can see, we bring in.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You bring in.
Yeah, you'll spend over two million potentially in three months.
Correct.
So we need some income to cover.
Well, excise tax is a good chunk here.
The net's three to four hundred thousand dollars a month.
Excise tax.
Yeah.
Yeah, so they're bringing in.
So if you have a, let's call it a recession, and there's not a whole lot of new excise tax, like new cars and whatever.
Yeah.
Cause that's going down, and you could get close to your,
Right.
you know, checking account balance.
Mm-hmm.
Did that happen in two thousand and eight? Is that one of those years that we had to borrow?
I can't remember what year it was.
Cause I remember there was a time that, there was not a lot of new cars being bought.
Yeah.
Right, yeah.
Once I was working in Maryland, that was up at the Old Town Hall, so that was before ninety-nine. And then the second time we were down here, so it might have been.
And then I don't know how that worked with taxes, cause there were a lot of foreclosures, and I don't know, you know, during recessions, right, you must have taxes way behind schedule.
Well, actually, the foreclosures, the banks.
Keep up with the taxes?
Yes, because they don't want the town to take the properties.
Correct.
So.
Banks don't like that.
Yeah.
You would know.
So actually, if people have a mortgage, it's really a good thing for the town, because they make sure the taxes get paid.
Exactly.
Correct, we do.
So, um, so it says two thousand and twenty-four tax commitment, two thousand and twenty-three, what's, is that registration commitment? What's R E G commitment?
Oh, regular commitment.
So.
Should just say tax, yeah.
Oh, it's, it's tax?
Yeah.
Two thousand and twenty-three tax?
Yeah.
Okay, and then the P P commitment?
Personal property.
Okay, so that's just another.
Yeah.
Is that like boats and trailers and what, what's personal property?
No, personal property is, um, equipment that businesses own, that they pay tax on. It's called personal.
You notice there's none.
What's that? What did she say?
Oh, I don't know.
She says you notice there's none.
I, yeah, I said, you notice there's none, yeah.
None that's been, we, we have a little bit, we get like ten thousand dollars in personal property tax.
Cause like even the, um, homeholds and stuff, right?
That's considered real estate.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, personal property would be like, you know, you've got a, something in your business, right?
Home business.
Well, yeah, actually, people may not realize, but a lot of people, if they rent, you have a propane tank and you rent it.
Yeah.
That company you rent that from pays us a little bit of personal property tax on, you renting that tank.
Wow.
Just little, little things like that, things the stores have, ATM machines.
Yeah.
What is state stabilization funds?
That was the property tax stabilization that the state did last year for people sixty-five and older.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
What they've done away with that.
Yeah.
Oh, they have, okay.
So the state was paying the difference, they were paying that?
Yes, paying the difference.
I don't realize how much money they were losing on people like me.
That's why they went away with it, that's why it went away.
That's why they did away with it, right.
Well, well, to me, I mean, it's, you know, multimillion dollar homes on the water, because somebody happens when they're sixty-five, I mean.
Yeah. That's why they did away with that.
Right, it, good idea for.
Yeah, it wasn't, I mean, it should have been based on income or something.
Correct, right, good idea for income with an income basis, yeah.
Yes. So, yeah, those poor people that had that last year are gonna get hit this year, because they didn't.
I know, I was, I was just thinking about.
They didn't get hit last year with the tax increase that everybody else did, so, they're gonna feel it this year.
Right.
But it is good to know.
Why, why's the new one?
It is good to know that the state was paying the difference though, I think that was the piece that a lot of people didn't know.
Yeah.
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 Isn't there something else they're doing to try to offset that, Patty?
Yeah, the, uh, property tax fairness credit, but you have to file an income tax form in order to get that. A lot of people don't when they're just on social security, but we're trying to encourage them to, because if they file it, they'll get this refund.
Hmm.
It's hard to get the word out there.
So this is not related to finance, but.
File and tax, file and tax forms once a year is bad enough, never mind like twice a year, I'll shoot myself.
Does the town collect email addresses or have the ability to collect email addresses, is it connected to the website at all?
Um, no, we, uh, we have a lot, the EMS subscription asks for your email address, so we have a lot, but we've never collected them.
Yeah. So is there a way for the town to push emails? That you know of?
Yeah.
Do they like a constant contact or something like that?
That's right, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
The website, it's cool, right?
Yeah, like where do they, when, when those emails come in, where are they, are they just stored in the municipal system, or?
Well, they're actually, they're not in our system, we just, they're just on file.
Okay, oh, paper.
Paper.
Okay, got it, all right, not related to this, I'm just curious.
That was something that was suggested to the selectmen though, and in ways to improve communication, is get a, a generic email address that anybody can email questions to, every time they do that, you now have their email address, right? So you can start building your base of emails, so you can communicate out. Every time they do that, you now have their email address, right? So, you can start building your base of emails, so you can communicate out that way.
That's probably not relevant to people under forty.
No, I mean, I think it would be, because if you, if you're, you know, sending something like a constant contact to remind them about
Yeah.
the educational things on the, um, upcoming referendums, like it could just be a constant contact, like.
Or sending them a link to, um, the town report when it's posted.
Right.
Hmm.
I mean, I would love to have an email sent to me, it's posted, and we can click the link and
Right.
and if the whole report is, is that, that's the other thing, is it possible to get the whole report?
As it is.
Is that, is, is that really manual to do?
No, no, it's on there.
The whole report is, oh, it is now.
Yeah.
I think you're right, sorry, um, yeah.
Okay. Is there anything that you think that we should know or ask that we haven't? She's probably like, hmm, why haven't they asked this question?
No, no, I'm.
Um, is there anything different about, um, capital, capital items that we should, like, how are those represented?
Okay, well, there's nothing about capital on this form.
Okay.
So, that would be a separate form, which I didn't think to bring to you, that's.
That's fair.
Um, but, so is it like, um, is it like a, just a depreciation schedule or?
Yeah, no, all, it's just, no, it's just a savings account, yeah, it's just a bank account.
It's a bank account.
Okay.
And it is earning pretty good interest rate now, so.
That's good.
Oh, okay, that's the capital fund. Sorry, I meant when we, so when we make purchases, do we, like, if we buy a fire engine for
Yeah, yeah.
Um.
seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Mm-hmm.
Do we depreciate that, or do we just pay for it and and it just comes out of the fund?
Right.
Okay, so we pay for it in cash?
Yeah.
All right.
So, question on that, because we had recommended five hundred thousand dollars into the capital improvement. Part of that was to be for, um, the fire truck purchase, which was not put into the article and is not in the June article, is that what we determined?
No, for the local.
Is not in the June article.
Right.
So, that was a human error that we discovered at town meeting. Um, but, so that additional money is just sitting in the capital improvement account.
Mm-hmm.
So, we theoretically could recommend for that to be put on next year's.
Yeah.
Okay, so and I don't know if, you can give us this answer, what is the timeline of when we meet, vote? That the book has to go, like, when does the book actually have to go to publishing?
We'd like it to go to publishing the last week in January, first week in February.
Okay.
To be ready for March town meeting.
Well, I think that helps us to back into our
Yeah.
schedules as to what we, um and is it possible for us to see the book prior to going to publishing? So that if we were to look at this, we could say, oh, wait a second, we had recommended this to be voted on and it's not represented accurately.
Right, you'll have to ask the select board that.
Okay.
That's what should be at your annual budget meeting, they should print the final copy.
Yeah, just the articles, right? That's what we care about, is the articles.
Right. Right, I wanna see, okay, this is what we recommended, you had also voted in favor of this, did you change it afterwards?
That's it, the book is a collaboration of everybody, it's not just one person doing the book.
Right, right.
It's like, what has to do that part, this bookkeeper has to do her part and.
Right.
Right, and I mean, there's obviously human errors, but if there's more eyes that are kind of looking at this, then we can be like, oh, wait a second.
Right. Yeah.
Um, and catch different things, um, okay, so we would want to ask the select board, see, yeah, another question that we would have asked him.
Cause, yeah.
Yeah, I think we do need to spend, we need to schedule time with the select board.
Um.
We'll have.
Yep, okay. Perfect. I think.
Immensely helpful.
Yes.
Immensely helpful, thank you. So, you have a bunch of other stuff, is that for us? Is there something there?
Uh, no, this is just that twenty, you can have it if you want, this is the, how we figure out the.
The eighteen page.
The eighteen page report on assessment valuation.
Assessment.
You can take that summary pages.
Yeah.
Right, yeah.
Is there any part of how this, um, committee functions that you think could be improved, that, that you're, you're saying, I don't think it is this.
Yeah. The only thing I can think is that they used to in January, the first of January, second week in January, that's when they had the real budget meeting.
Workshop. Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Where you sat down with the actual warrant, like you said.
Mm-hmm.
And went over it line by line.
So, the drafted budget prior, everything before it went to print?
Right.
That was the, um, Martin Luther King Week, Saturday.
Saturday.
Right, right.
Yeah. And, and when you say they, do you mean like finance and select?
And, yes, yes.
Okay, so that's when they had their joint meeting, which I think that's what we were trying to schedule, in our schedule.
Yep.
Okay.
Was that the joint, joint meeting with them in January?
Yes.
Right.
Okay.
That's when you really said it, and then you can get your, how many of you were in favor, how many of them were in favor, this is how it's gonna be worded.
Right, well, that's what we did in December.
Yeah.
Of last year, cause we were told that we needed, we needed to have it done beginning of January, is what we were told.
Yeah.
But what we had voted on is not what made it into the book.
So, but did you meet with the selectmen when you voted?
Yes.
Yeah.
You did?
Yep.
Right, so you wanna see the, you wanna do that in December probably still.
Yeah.
And then have the articles.
And then see the, the book with the articles.
To confirm that everything's good.
Right.
That was December twenty-first.
Yep.
We met with the select board and they voted and we voted.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, well, I don't know why it got changed after that.
Me either.
Yeah, cause you wouldn't be able to review it if you waited till mid-January.
Which that too is why, you know, there were a lot of comments and questions about that at the town meeting, so if we can avoid that.
Mm-hmm.
We're all singing from the same sheet of music.
Correct. Yeah, and I think then it's, there's a lot more transparency, a lot more cohesion between everybody.
Right. Yeah.
So, okay. Helpful.
Anything else?
Can I speak something off, off your, off your agenda?
Should we adjourn? Oh, official, I thought you meant office.
I just wanted to, to run an idea behind, by you, um, we've been doing a lot of research on, on trucks in the event that there's a day that it gets on a warrant. So, three hundred and fifty thousand is what you guys had decided, we know that can't buy a new tank truck. So, trying to find a used vehicle, and what I need help with, not necessarily tonight, but for you guys to think about is what dollar amount is sufficient for how long we expect to get out of the vehicle, right? So, I try to divide out the years that we want out of a vehicle into the cost of the vehicle, to say it's gonna cost us this much every year. So, I wanna be able to compare a used vehicle to a new vehicle and the years we expect to get out of each one, and what that annual cost is.
Hmm.
And I say that because there is one company that is actually pre-building trucks now, so they don't wait for spec to come in. So, they have some tank trucks available, and there, there's one that, that just came in over in New Hampshire, a dealer over there who's willing to bring it over to us. And I wanna see it, but I want everybody else to be able to see it too.
Hmm.
Um, but I wanna know that everybody's on board with that idea. But that truck, um, is coming in at four ninety-nine, so if you remember, I had it placed at five hundred and fifty.
Right.
So, but again, how long is that, do we expect to get out of that three hundred and fifty thousand dollar investment? Versus if we just bit the bullet, paid the five hundred, and know that we're gonna get twenty-five or thirty years out of it, we can say it's gonna cost us this much annually.
Cause a three hundred and fifty thousand dollar truck would be how old?
Well, that's the problem right now, like, for example, you know, I got some criticism for buying that two thousand and two Freightliner. You can go online at a dealer and find that same truck for fifty thousand dollars. So, a three hundred and fifty thousand dollar truck is still gonna be pretty old in today's money.
Right, so the number of years that you're gonna get out of that truck compared to the five hundred thousand dollar truck is gonna be significantly different.
So, five hundred is brand new.
Yeah.
On this particular one, right, and, and that's, we wouldn't spec anything, you can do add-ons if you wanted to, but they have a base spec.
Mm-hmm.
Um, it's a Kenworth chassis, three thousand gallons of water, twelve hundred and fifty, uh, yeah, twelve hundred and fifty gallon per minute pump. Those are all good things, um, I would expect it to have limited compartment space, because we, you know, it's a, a base spec. But that's actually what I want, because to replace engine one, I wanna shorten it, and I want it to be a tanker and not not used as an engine, so that'll cut a lot of that cost out, um, but it will shorten the truck up to hopefully be able to fit it in up here where it belongs, so. But just something for you guys to think about and.
But that's something that's available now, it wouldn't be available next.
Well, they're, they're producing them.
Okay.
Right.
This, he just happens to have this as a demo to be able to show.
But the soonest we could approve that is next March.
Or November, if, if the select board wanted to, I'm, but I'm just saying, whenever that happens, it would be nice to say, okay. It, it makes more sense to buy a new one, because it's gonna last some more years, or it doesn't, whatever the general feeling is, but there needs to be a conversation, right?
Right.
So, that could go on, we could have a conversation with the select board to have that go on a warrant in November to be voted on by the people.
If they want to.
If they wanted to. Okay.
Good to know.
That's very good to know, so that would be an opportunity for us to look at the capital improvement budget and see, cause we have a buffer in there now.
Yeah, there's enough money.
Right.
Right.
Right, right, because Public Works didn't get their hundred and fifty thousand dollar trucks, so.
Right.
What's in the capital improvement fund right now, roughly?
Well, if.
Well, we put a half a million in in March, so.
Yeah.
Was it four fifty?
Something left.
Is what was in here, or did something else get approved?
Well, maybe, maybe what?
Four fifty. But is there like two million in there, or one million?
It had, it had six seventy-eight, and we wanted to put four fifty, so it's probably got one, one point one somewhere in there.
Yeah, six hundred and fifty.
Enough to cover.
Enough to cover.
Enough to cover an engine, yeah, or I'm sorry, a car.
Well, the four fifty.
Yeah, cause technically, the five hasn't been added yet, because we haven't collected it yet.
We have that. That four fifty all had. Allocations.
Right.
Right.
You know, broken down.
Right.
But I mean, when we were talking originally, you were, you know, it was three fifty versus seven fifty, which was a different conversation.
Yeah.
Than three fifty versus a half million.
Right.
Right.
That's really where we're at.
As we're finding a half a million dollars on the mill rate is not.
Four hundred dollars or whatever.
Right.
Yeah.
Um.
Well, and, and if it's a ten-year-old truck versus, you know, if you're gonna get only fifteen years out of it versus twenty-five, I mean, that to me is a no-brainer.
Yeah, I agree.
The town's not going anywhere anytime soon.
Right.
We're gonna get twenty-five, if, they're, unless they're, you know, better trucks from ten years ago than what they're making today, that's the only reason.
So, this would be a commercial chassis, but, which is fine for a tank truck. I think it's a poly tank, which is what everybody's using now. Um, and as a tank truck, it's, it's not the frontline truck, where you put it, you take an engine out first. So, the tank truck rolls if you have a structure fire or, you know, something where you need the extra water, so
Hmm.
it's, it's going to last longer. In most, most replacement plans, you have five years at least to your tank trucks um, longer than you do your engines, cause the engines get used.
Do, are you getting rid of a truck?
Yeah, that would replace engine one.
And is that worth anything?
Then we're gonna run out of place, places to store these trucks.
I don't know what.
So, on the capital improvement.
Fifty thousand?
We put four fifty in.
But then it got bumped up to five. At town meeting.
That's just something to do.
Did it get bumped up to five?
I think it did.
To throw at it, but it's only four fifty now.
At town meeting.
It did.
If it's worth fifty.
So, it went to five.
I'm pretty sure it got bumped up to five at, at town meeting.
Emo got his ventilation system, Sean did not get the trucks, correct?
Yeah, no.
And then.
Madison had some stuff, right?
Madison got forty thousand dollars for ballpark improvements in Old Town Hall.
Mm-hmm.
Twenty thousand dollars to the capital improvement for the compactor and lighting. And that was all that was allocated, right?
No, I'm sorry, it was only four fifty, I think, at town meeting.
Yeah.
Was it four fifty?
Yeah, that's my notes.
Okay. All right. Okay.
There was conversation about half, but.
Yeah, I just checked it out as approved, didn't get, didn't get changed.
Yeah.
Okay. So, I can update the spreadsheet. So that way, when we do have a conversation about capital improvement, we can. Yeah, exactly. But if you could get us, like, cause there were some changes in some of these articles.
Mm-hmm.
Like what actually got voted on would be helpful.
Yep.
Cap.
Okay.
Perfect.
I'm gonna email you our schedule of meetings, we have the next several ones planned out.
Yep. Okay.
Yep, we've got them all for the rest of the year.
Very good.
So, thank you for staying late.
Thank you for coming and staying late.
Thank you for staying up past your bedtime.
I know.
We're being late tomorrow, right?
Thank you so much.
Oh, do we need to adjourn?
Yeah, we need to have a moment to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn.
We, we approved the twenty twenty-three.
All in favor? All in favor, I'm going home and watch.
The tool was approved for last year.